Welcome everyone, welcome everyone around the table. Those that have been watching this on television and everybody in the room. Glad that you're here. You will notice that we chose to have our work session in this setting today because we wanted to try to accommodate everyone who is interested. The first item up on our agenda today is the work session on Envision Eugene, city manager.
Thank you Mayor, and we will not give a staff presentation today. We want to make sure you have plenty of time to talk through it, and we've been actually having quite a few conversations over the last many months about Envision Eugene, and so hopefully all your questions have been answered. Primarily today, what we really would like from the council is to move forward on the pillars, strategies and tactics that we have been reviewing. It's important for us to continue moving down that process. As we've talked about before, this is not the final. We want to be able to send it out to the public and have scheduled a public hearing in April, so folks can provide some additional input on the topic. And as we have talked about before, one of the outstanding pieces is the single-family housing questions, and so we still have people working through those issues. So, we are here to answer any questions that you might have. Lisa's at the table, we have plenty of staff here that can also come and answer questions.
Thank you, city manager. Just a couple comments, and then we'll do a round here. For those who are watching or listening, I just wanted to quickly read through the seven pillars, because I think it's important for people to know what it is we're trying to address for the future of our community. So, the seven pillars that are before us today are, one, provide ample economic opportunities for all community members. That speaks to our acknowledgement of the need for jobs and opportunity. The second pillar, provide affordable housing for all income levels. The third pillar, plan for climate change and energy uncertainty. The fourth pillar, promote compact urban development and efficient transportation options. The fifth, protect, repair and enhance neighborhood livability. Then, protect, restore and enhance natural resources. And the final one is provide for adaptable, flexible and collaborative implementation. So, speaking to what we think we need to do for our community and how we think we go about doing that, and doing that in the context of our legal requirements to plan for 34,000 more people coming into our community in the next 20 years. I also want to say thank you to our city manager and staff, who did an enormous amount of very difficult and, I think, very rewarding work. I don't have a volume. This is the only volume I've got. Let's see. Are they on?
It is Mayor, they're actually adjusted from Metro TV primarily.
If I yell, it'll be...
It'll be yelling on TV.
Yeah, I'll be yelling on TV. All right. So, anyway, I also want to acknowledge that the plan calls for the multi-unit and commercial development needs to be met within the urban growth boundary, the need to... Let's see, what did I have here? Oh, and something that we've been working very hard on in our community is an acknowledgement that as we try to live more densely, it becomes hard to do that in a way that is a good place to live, and so we have a strong, we've had a lot of strong input from neighbors and others that, as we try to do that, that we're really respectful of trying to maintain the character of neighborhoods, and that certainly was a concern throughout and something that we're going to have to keep our eyes on. They also are put forward a limited expansion of the urban growth boundary for industrial property, and I heard from, even heard from thousand friends, that they believe that this is a modest amount of property for expansion of the urban growth boundary. So, that's just kind of the basics of the discussion. I'd like to start around the table and see if people would like to, before we put the motion on the table, see if anybody wants to make a comment or an observation. Go ahead.
Well, I too would personally like to thank not only the city manager and all the staff, but the citizens that were involved in this process. When it first started, I was a little bit on the skeptical side. I was thinking, oh no, here we go, this is going to be one of those long-drawn processes that's not going to get us anywhere. But as this thing has come along, I've seen that it's starting to actually mold into a shape that I think we can all work with, and that we can come up with a reasonably good plan for the future. So, I am very grateful for all the hard work, John, that you and your people have done, as well as the citizen involvement in this. And I think with the type of input that we've been getting from all sections of our community, the cross-sections of our community, I think that this would probably be one of the better products that we've ever produced here in the city council, and I'm really pleased that we're at this point in this venture forward.
So, is it the sense that you each, I don't want to force anybody to talk who doesn't want to, but I wanted to give them a round of conversation if you want to do it, so.
I'm glad that you said instead of climate uncertainty, my copy still says climate uncertainty. And I want to add to, I also appreciate all the work that people did, the many hours that they did, which still doesn't mean that I agree with everything they did. I am still really opposed to expanding the urban growth boundary, but I'm willing to go ahead with public hearings and public input.
Welcome, it says climate change and energy uncertainty, just to clarify. All right, well, Mike, do you have any comment?
Thank you Mayor, yeah, I too would like to add my voice to those complimenting the manager and the staff on process, and especially all the folks who gave up so much time to participate in this. There were a lot of folks in the private world who spent a lot of days, time off work, to try and make something better, and to do a different process that our community can be proud of. I still have some concerns about this. My understanding of the motion is to move it forward to hearing, but not for final approval of these specific pieces today. Do I have that right?
That's correct. You're...
I would really like to see us put, as has been mentioned by many of the folks who participated in the process, when we get to pillar number seven, under item number three, when we talk about monitoring this and creating a flexible and adaptable system, I don't think we're actually being serious about that work. If we're not looking to make adjustments and changes based on the information that we get, if we're going to look at it every five years, we should make our adjustments every five years. If we're going to look at the information and just say, that's nice, we're not going to make any adjustments or changes within the jaws of uncertainty for 10 years, we're going to get ourselves out of the jaws of uncertainty here, aren't we? So, my hope is that we can push that to, either we're only going to, you know, come look at this every 20 years like we're supposed to, or we're going to do what we mean, which is to make the adjustments and course corrections as we go every five years. Thank you.
Andrea?
Thank you Mayor. I also want to thank everybody for all their energy and effort. I know it was labor of love for the staff. I can tell that they...
They might not describe it that way.
I just can't say enough good about how hard the staff worked and how hard our community worked. I wasn't able to attend all of the CRG meetings, but initially I did attend some of them, and I was just amazed at the amount of energy and support that people wanted, even though they were like a bunch of racehorses like at the line, wanting to drag maps out, you know, the first go-rounds, but I think, you know, that they're, and I'm sure they still want to see us move ahead, so I'm more than comfortable supporting this, and I think this is a really good piece of work.
Chris?
Thanks. I would agree it was a labor. To me, whenever you want to try something new, there's always an inherent risk that you're going to be successful at it, or you're going to fall flat on your face. But I do appreciate the desire to try something new, because sometimes the old systems really don't get you to where you want to be, which I think is where we often wound up. So, I can't really express enough appreciation for the willingness to try something new, and I think in this case, there were a lot of payoffs, maybe not 100%, but I think it was overall very successful. And so, I'm more than happy to move this into the next phase, where, yeah, we're not looking at the final product, but we are definitely moving this down the road, and I'm sure that there will be adjustments and tweaks and torques as we go along. But I think in terms of how we got to where we are today, it is a whole lot better than some other ways we could have gotten to where we are today with a whole lot more acrimony. So, with that in mind, I'm very appreciative and look forward to the next chapter in this book.
Thank you. Alan?
Yeah, I too would like to express a gratitude to the staff, and especially Don, your leadership on this, and all the folks that worked on it. I think it's been an amazing process, and staff has worked long and hard on it, and I think you've got a good product here. And also, all the folks on the CRG who put in sometimes multiple all-day meetings to participate in this, and I think that the product that we have here exemplifies what can happen if the community gets together and has a discussion, as opposed to polarizing and shouting across the void at each other. And this is what this process really did. I think the seven pillars present a vision that, for our future of the city, that most people can support. So, I think it's a very good document. I do have two concerns, and are we going to go for another round of maybe?
We can do that if you want to.
Did you get me in?
Yeah, I've got you in queue.
The two that I have are, and I'll probably make a motion on one of them, is related to the word uncertainty and the climate change, and I just wanted to clarify what that, what I believe that meant, and what I think this document means. I think it could be wordsmithed better. The uncertainty isn't about the fact of climate change, it is about the uncertainty around the exact nature of the impacts on our community, and especially about the energy volatility. I mean, we've just seen gas or oil prices go up to $106 a barrel yesterday, from just a year ago being about $40 a barrel. So, we have lots of volatility and lots of uncertainty around how and who that happens, around energy costs in particular, but this document clearly plans for climate change impacting our community and mitigating that. So does our own energy and climate action plan that we have. So, I think that could be wordsmithed, and I do that now. The other one I have, concern I have is about the, in the provide ample economic opportunities for all community members pillar, a number six, in particular, the language says expand existing UGB by 400 to 500 acres for industrial uses. I hadn't heard the 500 number yet, this is the first time I saw that. So, I think when it comes time, I'll make a motion to change that to up to 400. I think the committee's still working through that, and 400 is kind of the higher point of where they were, and I think up to 400 represents where we are with that group and where I am personally.
Okay. Pat?
Thank you Mayor. We have a short time to discuss this and a fairly heavy item coming up after this, so I'm glad that most councillors seem to agree that this is not a time to dig deep or wordsmith, so thank you for that. I just want to make a comment on the process, echoing what other people have said, but adding to it a little bit. I did have an opportunity from early in the process to work with the CRG group, and subsequently with the, with other groups, the industrial lands study group, and it's been a remarkable process, beyond amazing. I mean, it's just, I've never seen anything even closer to it, and I believe the city manager, and Lisa, and the staff have done a tremendous job of taking thousands of hours of testimony, thousands of hours of meeting, not just the CRG meetings, but everything beyond that, and bringing it down to something as easy to look at as the seven pillars, and as easy to make decisions on, as you provided with the seven pillars. It really goes beyond what I dreamed could happen, based upon the first meeting that I attended, where we did have a large group of people in the room that were so far apart on some issues. But very briefly, there are a lot of people I see out in the audience today who were involved in CRG, and in subsequent groups, and I wonder, I don't think it's inappropriate, could you all show your hands real quickly, the people who at one level or another staff also were involved in CRG? So, it's not a small group of people, it's broad-spread across the community, it's huge, and nothing about this is arbitrary. It's, it just really is a, just a monumental, monumental piece of work that the staff and the manager have done, so thank you once again.
George?
Thank you Mayor. I've just got a couple of questions. Under next steps, in the last paragraph, it says staff will continue to work with consultants on the required technical products. I'm just wondering who the consultants are?
Well, Eco Northwest is our consultant, yes.
Eco Northwest, so, okay. And what are the required technical products?
Emily, do you know what those are specifically, for the, I mean?
Well, there are a number of them called out in the strategies and pillars themselves, and then there will also be planning documents that you already have that need to be changed. So, for example, the metro plan, some of your refinement plans in the code, and your transportation plans.
Okay. All right. And then it says begin work on other components of the final adoption package. What, can I just have a general idea what that means?
Well, so, the first next step really is to take this proposal with your approval to the next step of getting public input, holding another public hearing, letting the subcommittees from the community resource group continue to do their work, both on industrial land, as councillor Zelenka mentioned, there's a little bit more work to be done there. There's also a group that's looking at the housing mix, which is not before you now, and so that'll come back in April. Following that next step, presuming that we get a council approval on a plan that has a very specific direction around number of acres for the various land needs that we have, we'll then start putting together, specific as Emily mentioned, metro plan amendments and other plan amendments for you to come back to use. So, there's a whole host of next steps that kicks off a very formal land use process, which this is the precursor of.
Okay. All right. When, you know, I'm still waiting to look at maps. As the technical products, I'm assuming that there's maps with different scenarios, specifically for expanding industrial land, and that's one thing that we've been told we'll have to maybe expand the urban growth boundary for.
Right, so one of the...
I'm just really getting anxious for more, like, hard data.
I think a number of the strategies in here include analyzing different pieces, and so one of the things with your direction would be to go and start looking at, exploring where expansion areas might be for industrial land. So then we'll start having locations on maps, and then we'll also have to do some additional analysis around wetlands delineations and things like that. So, once we start getting more site-specific, then we can get more detailed about that. At this point, we have a conceptual, we haven't landed those acres.
Okay. Any timeframe there, when that might?
Over the next couple of months.
Exactly. Okay. All right. Okay, that's it for my questions, and I'm willing, totally willing to move this on. I just want to make one suggestion, in fact, I'll probably make a motion to amend, option A. We did this for the ECLA, when we, the first word is adopt, adopt the Envision Eugene pillars. I'd like to see that changed to accept or receive, so that we can pass them on for further review, simply because that, if I read that, I don't know about the rest of the councillors, but several of us felt that way for the ECLA report, when we accepted that. Received it, we accepted it, and then we passed it on for further review. When you adopt something that, to me, that means I agree with everything that's in there. I mean, I'm adopting this, this is my thing, and I'm going to go out and defend it, and I agree with...
I think accept would be...
If we could just change that to accept, when we make the motion.
Okay. The city manager, if she says that, that's fine with them.
Yeah, not a problem.
Okay.
Okay.
It's not new, it was just, we did that for the ECLA stuff.
Complete, George?
I'm done.
Okay. Mike?
Thank you, manager. I want to be crystal clear on process. This goes from here to public hearings, and then back to us for revision, or if we're intent on making an amendment of some nature, should we be making it now?
Don't need to make the amendment now. There's another time when the council will come back and actually have to, I don't know if it's adopt at that point, whatever the verb is at that point, but there will be a time after this public hearing process, it will come back, and then you will have the...
Officially adopted.
Yeah, officially adopted.
Okay, then I don't need to make my amendments today in order to make that, and I won't lose that opportunity in the future.
You will not lose that opportunity in the future.
And I think the question for you, Alan, is since we've said at this table that the recommendation for the 400 to 500 is going out for public input, and then you have an opportunity to adjust it, whether you can wait to do, to do that then as opposed to now?
I had one other thing Mayor.
I'm sorry?
That's perfectly all right. I didn't know if...
We can have a motion on the table.
I didn't know if councillor Zelenka had had the opportunity. He and I were scheduled the other day to see a presentation on the industrial lands together, and I know that that was a schedule problem for you, but that was very enlightening to me, to help me understand the exact reasons why that number may not be sufficient, so I'm, hopefully you'll get a chance to see that too.
Yeah, I haven't had that.
You're next in the queue. Did you want to be in the queue?
I would like to have this clarified, but given the sense of the council and where we are and moving forward, I'll just leave it at, as kind of, I intend to look at that more closely, and that that might be something that people would want to weigh in on in the public hearing, in public comment about what that range should actually be, and before we formally adopt it.
I support that as well. I think that's definitely something that's still got some work ahead to be, to be done on it. All right, you want to put that on the, put the motion out?
I'll make the motion, and I already intended to say accept, and thanks George, but I do have, I want to say, first, I do have a reservation about the city manager doing a lot of work looking for industrial lands before we decide that we need more. But I will read the motion, this is here, accept, that one word. I move to accept the Envision Eugene pillars strategies and tactics, contained in the March 9th AIS as the council's proposal for public review and comment, including another public hearing on April 25th. In addition, the city manager shall schedule a work session with the council in May to discuss the single-family housing need. Finally, the manager shall begin analyzing lands outside the current UGB for industrial land development, and schedule a council work session to review the results of those analyses.
Moved and?
Seconded.
Seconded. I'll just make one comment, and that is, I think it's, it's, one question that you will be thinking about is whether, that you accept the need for industrial lands, and the second then is if you do accept the need for industrial lands, it'll help you make the decision to know what the intention is with that, because it may be something totally different than you've actually ever thought about. So, it'll just help, it'll just help inform you, I think. Any other comments before we vote? Yes?
One more comment. Part of this also envisions taking some smaller industrial land parcels, one to five acre ones, and converting them, because they're not very usable in that context, to converting them to commercial, and that might be as much as 100 to 200 acres.
Yes.
And so, the net industrial land would be in that, between this 200 to...
Right.
All right, I think we're ready to vote?
I think it's the net in the, how I understand is, if you just do the math that says we have, we're converting some industrial to commercial, then you're just strictly doing the math, you're not necessarily qualifying how much is actually needed of new industrial land.
But it doesn't preclude 400 more acres.
Right.
Right, I didn't read it, I didn't hear it that way, but...
I think that's the way it was intended to be said.
Let's get in the queue if you want to. Yes. Wait a minute, he's got a little more time.
So, what I meant by net is, if you take these two calculations, we've got a need of, we don't have any need for industrial actually, so this is, this suggestion is to have 400 to 500 acres, and we can debate that later over the next couple of months, as the exact number, of increase in industrial land probably outside the UGB. At the same time, within the UGB, we're going to convert some of the commercial land into, or industrial lands that are too small, into commercial lands. So, those two things can be thought of separately.
Right.
But the effect is, that some of those industrial lands that are currently industrial lands become commercial.
Right. I think you pointed out the key there, if I can respond here, that, that we don't have a specific acreage need, but we have a parcel size need, and so the part, the land that would be converted from industrial to commercial are of a parcel size that don't meet the area's economic job need for larger parcel sizes. So, they're, they're very, they're very separate in that regard, because one is an, is a surplus. We have more small parcels than we're going to use, we're going to re-designate those as commercial. We don't have enough larger parcels, we're going to try to find some larger parcels.
I've got Mike and Pat in queue.
As I mentioned previously, I hope you get a chance to see this presentation. One of the things that I saw was a very detailed mapping of some of the only industrial acres that are available, and the size, of the size parcels that were presented to us the other day, there were three that were presented as if they had adequate size, they were in the 50 to 75 acre range. There was one particular one, for example, it was owned by the Rexius family, of 67 acres. It's bisected by, I forget the exact word, Prime One Waterway, which limits the upper portion, and then there's another whole swath of the area that the Corps of Engineers has said is unbuildable. And it takes the usable portions of that 67 acres down to about 12 acres of what you can really do anything with. And so, the point of the presentation we saw was all of the constraints that are on those very few parcels that we're saying we already have, in essence saying, we don't really have what we're saying we have. And so, I think that's where the difference in the number came in, above and beyond there. We still need to do a more practical analysis of what's actually needed in order for our economy to do better, and so that they're not just in one place. And I think that's, that's what the number is around, and again, I hope you get a chance to see that presentation.
Pat?
Thank you Mayor. I'm competing a little right here. Just, you know, we talk about wordsmithing quite a bit, and we have a fairly straightforward motion here that doesn't have any math in it, so without mathsmithing, let's move forward with the motion.
All right, so the motion's on the table, and I don't see anybody else in the queue, so all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. None in opposition, it passes. Thank you all, and thank you all, and this is a good example of a good collaborative effort on the part of the community.
Thank you.
The next item on our work session today, and we're ahead of time by 20 minutes, so that's...
Record.
The West Eugene MX extension. City manager?
Thank you Mayor, and again, we don't have a prepared presentation, we have staff, LTD staffs available to answer any questions that you might have during your deliberation.
Okay. Well, just to start out with a couple of comments here, that this has been a three-year process. There are, and we would all acknowledge strongly held differences of opinion that we've heard from. For me, the goal remains to ensure our metro area has a transit system that supports Envision Eugene, can council goals, and meets our transit goals. Federal partners and agencies, as I learned from my visit to Washington last week, are aware and watching, and overall, they think that MX is an extraordinary success and model for the rest of the country. So, with that, I'm going to just head around the table, and we'll do one round, and then we'll put some motions on the table. Did you have anything you want to? No? Okay. Want to start with you, George?
Yeah, I've got a question. It's page three of the, of the issue statement. There's just a sentence here at the bottom of the second paragraph, it says, "The LTD board's discussion to consider delaying a decision until June, July did not automatically change the schedule of coming through decision today." It may have already been explained in one of, one of our other meetings, but I'm not clear why, why they were considering delaying a decision till summer. Do you know why?
Okay. I think, I think that must be answered by LTD staff.
Why don't we have someone to come up?
Did you hear the question? Well, there's a sentence here, it says, "The LTD board's discussion to consider delaying a decision until June, July did not automatically change this schedule." This schedule being us coming to a decision to move forward or not, one of the preferred options, so, and I was just curious, you may have explained previously, but if you did, I missed it or forgot it, why the board was considering a delay till June or July?
So, we actually brought that option to them right after the joint LPA committee took its action to forward to build alternatives. We wanted to outline for them process options that would allow, if needed, further exploration of the two build alternatives. Not necessary, but just options.
All right. Well, since you're up here, I have one more question. I'm just looking at the motions, the suggested motions here, and in the two years that I've been on the council, and every, every time that we have met with you, with LTD, and every public presentation I've gone to, it's always been stated either verbally or in print that the no build option will automatically move forward with whatever locally preferred alternative we do end up picking to the environmental review process, and there's none of that is stated in these motions. I'm just, is that still the case? I mean, is that true? Is that the way that it works?
I think the city manager would like to weigh in on that before...
Yeah, Tom can talk about the, sort of the legally moving it forward. My understanding is the no build option moves forward as part of the NEPA process.
My understanding is the no build option moves forward as part of the NEPA process. And so this motion isn't intended to stop that. The intent of the motion is that the council would make a clear statement on whether or not you want to build MX as a preferred alternative or to not build as a preferred alternative and not just leave it hanging out there over the next many months.
But has an advisory capacity.
It's strictly an advisory capacity back to the MPC as well as the LTD Board.
Well, they will surely know our intentions in about five or 10 minutes, I think, because we're going to, my, my guess is there's, there's enough votes to pick one or the other alternatives. So I, I just, I guess I'll continue my comments with our first motion. It just seems kind of worthless to me. It seems, it seems unnecessary and I, I just, I guess I just don't understand that because we've always, we've always heard that the no build automatically moves forward. Now it's five minutes till midnight and now we have a, we have, we're presented with the situation here. Well, let's, no, let's just tell them we don't want no build. I have a hard time with that.
So before we move on, what I could say to that is that is not a motion made by LTD, that's our, that's a proposed motion from us. And so you have the ability to accept that or not accept that as we do every time. But it is the recommendation of our staff that we, that we, that we deal with that first. So that is what, what's before you.
Okay, I just have, I mean, who, whose idea was this? Because I, I mean, this kind, to me, it kind of came as a surprise.
It was my idea.
Your idea?
Yeah. And the reason, strictly it's advisory and again legally, no build moves forward, but it's a, and, and I, of course, as the mayor suggested, you can choose to reframe motions or you choose to reframe them. For me, it was just strictly a, an opportunity for the council to make a clear statement on whether you prefer to build or to not build and then not have it hanging out there. And so people either that want to build or to have a no build option are not confused about what the direction, the specific direction of the council is. So that's what the intent of that is. And then it's, as it talks about here, if the council says, "Let's build that," then where do you want to, to do that? You can combine the motions. Our view, of course, would choose to do those kinds of things.
All right. Thank you.
Alan, did you want to be in the queue?
Yeah, I just, this, as the mayor said, this just clarifies and clearly states the council's preference or intent and allows us to move forward and, and puts an end to the debate and the divisiveness that ensued because of.
Okay, we're just, just go around the table now for first comments and so Pat, you're next.
Okay. Just a first comment, Mayor, thank you. You know, I like MX. I write it occasionally, write it more frequently than, and the more I write it, the more I like it. And I'm excited about the prospect of, of more, more points in the community being accessible to MX. I'm particularly excited about Bethel being attached to MX at some point in the future. This does not address Bethel, but it takes a step in that direction. Consequently, having ridden MX and seen, over the weekend, visiting my daughter in San Francisco, seeing what a, a working transit system does for people who choose not to drive or who can outdrive, it's, I'm, I'm excited about the build out of, of a system to Bethel, Dana Bow. And I believe that moving forward, opposing a no build or supporting a build, whatever our motion may be, is the right direction at this point in time. And, and just look forward to discussing more regarding where MX is going to go for the future and what I would have done several months ago or a year ago when, when the decision was made to go with West 11th instead of Highway 99. Thank you.
Easy for you to say. No, no.
That's what I said.
George.
Well, you know, up until about 20 minutes before I left my house, I was still going through all the documents, paperwork, comments, everything else. And it looks like I still have some more to go through. So I'm curious to see what the rest of my counselors, fellow counselors have to say about this with the recent court rulings. I think we've all been a little hesitant to discuss this away from the council chambers. I'll just pass. Thank you.
No, George, please. And you, and people in the audience, please be respectful.
What I was saying was that with the recent court ruling, we've been a little hesitant to speak with our fellow counselors about upcoming decisions. So up until that time, you know, we were sharing information back and forth, but I think we've all been a little reluctant to do that. And I'm just kind of curious to see, you know, here's some of the opinions of my fellow counselors. You know, I too would have liked to have seen this, the third leg of the EMX go up Highway 99 area. And I think I was on the council at the time that, when we tried to do that. My biggest concern about the West Eugene MX is that when it first was put out there, it was labeled the West 11th Extension. And I argued at that time that we shouldn't be calling it the West 11th because that pretty much predestines where it's going to go. And I tried and tried over and over to get it to be called the West Eugene Extension, but every conversation I've ever been involved in, it's always been the West 11th Extension. So I'm just a, just a little concerned. I want to hear from my other counselors before I, and I haven't yet to make up my final decision as to which direction I'm going on this. It's one of the, the issues that I've spent a lot of time studying and it's, it's really going to be a tough decision for me to make. Are there a lot of factors involved in, in, you know, not only the financial factor as to where the money's going to come from and who's going to end up paying for it? How's that money being spent going to affect other areas? How is it going to impact the community? How is it going to impact the residential district? How is it going to impact the, the commercial district? And, you know, what we did is years ago, we said, okay, this is the way that we want West 11th to look. We made it auto-centric. So now we're saying, okay, folks, now that we've had all the redevelopment, everybody has to go back up on this, right up next to the street, now we're trying to figure out how to make this fit. It reminds me an awful lot of the conversation that we had when we were talking about the Covert Road extension or route, trying to make something fit. So it's going to be a tough decision for me. I, I do want to hear from my fellow counselors.
Alan, do you want to say anything? You've already had one.
Yeah, I just made a couple of comments. I'm in favor of a build option. I think the need has been demonstrated and is very clear. I think this is an investment in our future. With climate change, peak oil, $4 a gallon gasoline, I think this makes a lot of sense to me. One of the things in being involved in transportation policy over the last couple of years is that we need to have options be available to people. And that means pedestrian options, bicycle options, transit options, other than just the single-family, single-occupy vehicle. And so this gets us a long ways towards creating those options. One of the neat things about MX that I really appreciate, and I write it occasionally too, is that once you get a reliable and convenient system like this, where you can just walk up to the station and know that the next bus is coming in the next couple of minutes, it becomes successful, which is why MX has had such a tremendous increase in ridership and exceeded its 20-year projections in the first year. I expect the same thing to happen on the newest section in Springfield and, and this section as well.
Chris, you're next.
Thank you. Like some of the others here, this is obviously a very difficult decision. And for me, a lot of the difficulty is not in the ability to see a clear right or wrong. I don't think this is about what is right or what is wrong or who is right or who is wrong. Actually, I see validity and good points of view and reasonable positions on both sides. They unfortunately happen to be irreconcilably opposed to each other and that then becomes the challenge. It's our job to decide which of these correct or which of these reasonable perspectives we have to choose because you can't choose them both. And so for me, the decision becomes what is best for the community, not only today, but also in the future. And at the same time, what can we do to ensure that individuals within that community are accommodated to the degree they can? And that's what has made this so difficult. I don't find anybody wrong here, but I know I have to make a choice or I have to make a decision and propose something. So for me, the first question is, am I willing to look at killing MX right now?
Yay.
Please. We'll stop and we'll leave if you can't allow us to deliberate. That's really what we're trying to do and we're trying to do this.
What about double decker buses? Do you ever do that?
Now.
I'm sorry. Look, continue.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
And so the challenge for me is to try to find a way to, as much as possible, acknowledge that both sides have valid points and have good perspectives and figure out a way to try to accommodate what's best for the community and for the individuals. And that's the position I've taken before. If you do want to build, you have to build in a way that recognizes what would be the impacts here today and on the ground. I also have to think about what is the future? What is 20 years from now going to be? And if you, if you say, well, let's wait until we need it and then build it, you know from long experience that if you wait till you need it, it's too late. You have to be able to anticipate. Anticipation's a difficult thing and knowing what to do in anticipation is a difficult thing. That's where it's a judgment call and it's a very difficult one. So with the first question, can I, in my, in my mind, reasonably kill MX today, right now, with acknowledging or supporting a no build option? I can't bring myself to do that. With that in mind, I do think there is still a lot of conversation that needs to continue through the summer on this issue. So with regard to the first question, yes, I think we need to inform the LTD Board that the council is opposed to a no build option because I think we need to look at something to accommodate 20 years of development, but we have to have a lot of conversation about what we can do that has the least impact on businesses now, will allow things to continue that doesn't create harm while you're trying to do good. So with the first question, I'm there, but I see a lot of conversation that still has to occur.
All right. Andrea.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is kind of like, we're talking this way and everybody's this way and that microphones are for the television, Metro TV, not necessarily to help you all hear better. So I'm apologizing for all of us and your discomfort in not being able to hear us. I am willing to move this on to let the LTD Board know that I personally think this is a good project. I do agree with a lot of what's been said about conversations need to keep happening and looking at it at a larger picture and like a 20-year window. For me personally, this is also a social equity issue. I think that people who don't have a choice need to use buses and they need to be able to get to hubs of employment and shopping. So for those reasons, I would support to let the LTD Board know that we support them.
Mike?
I think very stark choices like this are sometimes unfortunate. I, as a, as a writer, I absolutely love MX. I've ridden it many times and Pat and I rode it the other day after an event together. I love riding on MX, but that's not my job today. My job sitting in this chair is to say it's a good policy and a public policy and taxpayer decision to move forward in this way. And that presents me with some challenges. So my, I guess my first question, I feel differently about it than I do as a writer. It's a great idea and a great system that our community deserves. My questions are around timing and around the wisdom of when and how to move forward. So as I understand, the federal, it's a SNAPS grant, right, that we're, we're applying for with this, right? That's what it's called.
It's a start.
It's a new starts, right?
New start grant. They're annual, is that correct?
Yes. And if I say anything that's not quite right, we'll have to have the LTD folks weigh in or.
Which is why we're going through this process to try and get everything in place so that by August, we can make an application for this money. It's not like it's been allocated already and it's not been, it's not been given to us or, or set aside for us. It's a grant that we're applying for and we hope we get, right?
Correct. My understanding is we do not have the dollars appropriated for us. We'd be applying for those dollars.
And there's really nothing that inhibits us from applying for it next year in the exact same way. My point is this, in, one of the things that used to really make me cranky about George W. Bush is I expected him in the circumstances he had to spend a lot less money. And in 2007, the federal government spent $181 billion more than it had and had to borrow it to do it. In February last month, it was $232 billion just for the month. We're heading down a road of spending money at a rate that scares me and I don't feel comfortable participating. And we're asking the federal government, can we borrow dozens and dozens and tens of millions of dollars from our kids in order to build this at a time when the economy can't support us doing that? And that gives me some pause. And when I look at this and say, we could do the same thing next year when perhaps the economy is in much better shape, I think that might be a viable option. Secondly, you've been given kudos today that you deserve for leadership in bringing this community forward on what could have been a contentious issue with Envision Eugene. And what we've seen around this decision could mildly be described as contentious. And I think that's really unfortunate because it doesn't have to be. I'd like to see us go through a process like we've done with Envision Eugene where we're accommodating and hearing people who have concerns better and doing a better job of moving forward with most of the community behind an important decision like this. And so I would offer the amendment that we should postpone for a year, making a preferred alternative at least, so that we have a better opportunity to be able to work out some of the challenges here that are, that these plans are not satisfactory to the community by any stretch. And I think there's an opportunity to do that.
Do you want to put a motion out because there?
I'll wait until the motion comes and I'll amend.
All right. Denny?
I still got to talk, don't I? Well, first, in response, well, first in response to Mike, I didn't think too much of George W.
You agree again?
We welcome you to the call.
Thanks. And in response to Chris, I think it's already too late in a sense that people have already built their businesses right up to the street. Also, it's already too late to involve them in the beginning. It, it reminds me of the time we were going to build a city hall on someone's property and she didn't know it. And this, that, this went pretty far before the businesses that are affected became really aware of it. I was, I'm a strong supporter of transit. People say, well, you like transit, don't you? So why don't you like MX? It's not that I don't like it either, but I, I, it doesn't have to be, that doesn't have to be the only way to have transit. I think buses are great. Trains are great, all kinds of public transit. And they're really important and we need more of all of it. When I first came to Eugene in 1979, I was really happy to see the great bus system. Since then, it has deteriorated remarkably. It's, where it goes, it's fine, but the bus routes have been cut. You look puzzled, Pat, but they, I know people who used to be able to go places by bus and they can't anymore. To school, home from school to work. If you go to the whole south part of Eugene, the bus service is really poor. People are always saying to me, why don't you ride MX someplace? And I say, well, I'd have to walk three and a half miles to get to it and by then I would be just about where I wanted to go anyway. The, I'm concerned, my concerns are for the businesses, obviously, and for the trees. I just, we just got, I, I've been out Pioneer Parkway and it's like a graveyard. All those beautiful trees are gone. For the use of tax money, regardless of whether it's federal money or state money, especially the state money, which could possibly be transferred to education. And I'm concerned about how much it's going to cost to operate these big buses and why, I don't understand why we can't have more small buses. And I just, I, I really, and then we just got another pile of material here. I don't know whether there's anything new or not, but I certainly can't read all of that while I'm sitting in a meeting unless I excuse myself and go to the back room. But so I, well, I'll keep listening and if, if I read the motion as it is here, I won't vote for it.
So I, no clapping, please. Yeah, I know you're in the queue. Yes. Yes. Mike and then Andrea and then George.
Yeah, I want to sum up.
I haven't called yet.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments before I call the next folks. One is that I just wanted to make the observation that in fact LTD looked at, I believe it was 52 different.
58.
58 different alignments. So they didn't look at one alignment, they looked at 58 different alignments before narrowing it down. I want to say that we all have concern for jobs and I want, and I do want to make the comment that it costs less to, with more, accommodating more people to NMX than one of our regular buses that serve our community, although both have their purpose and need in, in putting the whole system together. So with that, Mike, you're next.
Yeah, Mayor, I was just going to say, I've seen some new information, a new analysis of, of this and I'm, I'm not at all clear that this, and it's been one of my concerns all along, that operationally, this will be much more expensive as time goes on, not less. So I, I don't think we can make that claim clearly and I don't think that LTD's proven that case to me sufficiently to say that the ongoing operation of this will be less than if we were to do it with traditional buses. But I wanted to bring a- But I wanted to bring back around what I was saying before to a more logical conclusion, in that I think that we're not by any means pushed to do this right now. We're not losing an opportunity. And the only rush that I see is that some will see the political opportunity for this to pass right now. I don't think that's leadership. I think leadership is bringing people together to form a solution to a difficult problem that has a majority of people behind it. And I don't think you can accurately say that about this particular motion at this time. I think that this is politics, and it's not leadership. And I'd like to give us the time to be able to bring more people together, in order to form some kind of plan, because, again, I don't want to kill MX forever. If posed with this either-or choice, I lean towards no-build, because I don't think it's the wise thing for us to do right now. But I don't want to be posed with the either-or choice. So for me, leadership means try to find another way where we can keep moving with a viable system that makes sense for us long-term, but to do it in a way where the community isn't divided over it. So I hope I can have some support for that amendment when I bring it up.
Andrea?
Well, Mike, you won't be getting my support for that, because I feel that this project has been worked on for, I know, I've been going and meeting with the staff from LTD, plus their souls, for many, many years, already, at least two, that I've been having conversations with them. This isn't new. I don't think, I personally think this is good leadership. I think that we need to let our community know where we stand on this, and if this council chooses to do a no-build, or that would be the preference of this council, to me, that would be saying to, in my mind's eye, I think that would really be a bad thing. I think that we need to continue this forward. I don't know what more information, how much harder our expectation would be for LTD to work. I think that these, just like with Envision Eugene, I think the staff has worked really hard. Could they have done something different? Probably. Everything is always, you know, 50/50 hindsight, or whatever that term is. You know, could they have started back when we made the motion, and what year was that that we said to go down West 11th, Mayor, 2006?
West Eugene.
Yeah, you know, so I don't know, could they have started then? I mean, here it is five years later, and we're at this decision-making point. We gave them direction, this council gave them direction to go down West 11th. And I still think that if it's a comprehensive program, if it's a comprehensive bus route system, then West 11th will always be a part of it, to include Bethel, to include River Road, to go out to your side of town, like, over the bridge, to Peace Health, I mean, to Riverbend. So I hope that we do show leadership, that we do let our community know where we're standing on this. And I do appreciate having, kind of, this is where, what is it? Cut Fisher.
Fisher cut.
Fisher cut bait.
George Brown.
Thank you. It's, I don't know, there's so many unfortunate things about this. It's unfortunate that Transportation System Management wasn't given a try first to see, which was the, you know, the West Eugene study people, it's why that much less expensive It's unfortunate that the neighbors and businesspeople and property owners weren't brought in on a committee right from the get-go, instead of allowed in kicking and screaming later. They should have been involved in it from the get-go, like what happened at Coburg Road, I believe. That's one reason why it's so contentious. Having said all that, I'm not going to support this first motion, because I think it's really unnecessary. I think, I think that the LTD board are big boys, and they can live with a little more uncertainty. We've all been living with it. I will support one of the other motions, though, below. I will support to move one of the route, preferred routes, forward. So therefore, I feel that's unnecessary to support the first motion. I won't do that. Thank you.
Chris, were you in the queue?
Yeah, thank you. Just quickly, I realize this is a very difficult conversation, and in having these kind of difficult conversations, it's important to not start indulging in analyzing other people's motives and intentions by saying, this is political, or this is not political, or we are leaders, or we are not leaders. We're colleagues on a board, trying to make a tough decision, and to analyze my motivation is not a wise thing to do. With that said, I think it is important that we think about what our own personal desires are, what we think is best for the community. Not the community just tomorrow, or the next election, but the community for the next 20 years. That is a difficult decision, and it's one that has an enormous weight on us, because we don't know what the future's going to be, any more than we know how it's affected by the decisions we make today. With that said, I go back to the earlier point is, can I envision a future with transit just the way it is now? With business just the way it is now? With everything being exactly the way it is now, and in 20 years, nothing changes? If we buy the premise that nothing will change in 20 years, then we don't need to do anything. But if we anticipate something will change in 20 years, West Eugene in particular is going to change in 20 years, which is my point about linking this to land use, then we have to say, okay, what changes do we need to make to accommodate that change, and when do we need to make them? And for me, that's what this question boils down to. Can I envision a future 20 years from now that doesn't require some sort of accommodation around transportation and transit? And honestly, I really can't. I've been living here for 35 years, and I've seen a lot of changes take place. And if we don't anticipate them, and try to build to recognize them, then we're being, we're not being very smart. At the same time, we need to think about what is fiscally prudent, what is reasonable, what can work. I've heard a lot of folks say LTD is lying, they're cheating, they're trying to build a legacy, they're dishonest. I've been around LTD for that same 35 years, and suddenly, I don't see them being the lying, cheating, self-aggrandizing monument builders that they're being characterized as right now. I know that there are numbers that are in dispute. There is no, numbers are always going to be in dispute. But I think the notion that we do need to do something about West Eugene, since the West Eugene Parkway is now gone, there is still going to be growth out there. We've accepted the fact there's going to be growth out there, and we need to accommodate it somehow, and just cars is not going to be the best solution. It's got to be cars plus some other accommodation. I want to keep the conversation going, which, to me, is what the first vote is. It at least keeps the conversation going.
Thank you. I've got Alan, and Pat, and Mike, and then we're going to put a motion on the table, and get going here.
So I agree with what you said, Chris. This is about the future. I think we're going to see dramatic change over the next 20 years or so. I think it's incumbent upon us to be ahead of that change, and before we're thinking about it. I grew up in the Silicon Valley, in the San Francisco Bay Area, in Sunnyvale, and I watched San Jose go back and spend billions of dollars putting in their light rail system. We're not San Jose, but they didn't have the foresight to plan about that when I was growing up, and they had to go back and do it later, and it was way more expensive and much more, much more difficult to do. I agree with Councilor Ortiz, that this is, we've been planning this for years. And I think that LTD has been responsive to the businesses. Not everybody's absolutely happy, but I asked for, and we got this list of information about all the detailed mitigations, there's over 70 in here. So over 70 circumstances LTD changed their plan to accommodate people's concerns, and it goes beyond that. And this isn't new information, this is just repackaged. And I think all the info's out there. As the mayor likes to say, this is an engaged community. We can talk about anything, anywhere, anytime, for as long as we can. And we would. I guess I disagree with, that the timing's not critical here. I think the timing is critical. There are windows of opportunity where you can take advantage of something and move it forward, and I think there's a window of opportunity right here that we can take advantage of, and in the future, I'm really unclear whether or not that's going to happen. So I think this is an opportunity to seize that window of opportunity and make an investment in our future. So at some point, we need to make a decision. I think leadership is saying, we've heard enough, we've got all the info, let's make a decision and move forward. That's a means leadership.
I'm going to let Pat make his comment, and then I'm going to have Dede put on the table, and I know you have an amendment you're going to make.
I can be brief. To the ministry recorder, can you take, read back what Councillor Pryor had to say, and put my quotes around it also?
Please.
Just very briefly, this has been contentious, and it's been contentious at the Sunday dinner table at my house, where I don't use the word "civil war" lightly, because I grew up in a community, in a city that was ravaged by civil war in the 1500s. But there's been a civil war, and I hear both sides of the argument right at my dinner table. Whatever decision is made, some people are going to be dissatisfied with the decision, right down to the dinner table on Sunday at my house. So that's the way it goes.
Dede, will you put the motion here, please?
I will read the motion that's here, and I have, I don't know what's going to happen to it, but I will not vote for it. I move to support LTD's construction of MX in West Eugene, and to direct the city manager to inform the LTD board that the council is opposed to the no-build option.
Second.
Mike, your first just...
Yeah, first thing I wanted to say, which was why I was asking to be in the queue when it was appropriate to do so, was that I apologize to my friend Chris here. My comments were not in any way directed at characterizing anybody's motivations around this table at all. If it came across that way, I really did not mean it that way, because I, too, don't want to have that sort of thing taking place here. My comments were directed towards something I'd read in a newspaper recently that characterized those who may have concerns about this, and I wanted to make it perfectly clear that I didn't agree with the characterization of those that held that opinion. So I would move that we replace the language in the last half of this, where it begins, opposed to the no-build option, and say LTD board that the council is ready to proceed with the discussion one year from today. If I have a second, I'll speak to that.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded.
I don't see the critical need to move now. I understand that we have to plan for our future, and I agree. And I agree that MX is probably a good system, and adding to what we have is intelligent, and I agree with a lot of the information we've seen. But the information that I've seen doesn't present this to me as a critical decision that has to be made now. And I think that the contention in the community over this outweighs anything I've heard that says this is a decision that has to be made now. I'd prefer that what we have the capacity to do is look at a decision-making process that addresses people's concerns, that have very valid concerns right now, and for us to find a new way to move forward with this, so that we actually can move forward in a reasonable way, with a much broader sense of community support. Because I think we should be prepared for the future, but I think we should do it in a way where we bring the rest of our community with us. So that's the reason for my amendment, and I hope you can support it.
So we're going to vote now on Mike's amendment? All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, in opposition. One, two, three, four.
I was still thinking about it. I'll vote for it.
For the amendment?
Mm-hmm.
So let's do that again. All those in favor of the amendment? One, two, three, four. All those in opposition? One, two, three, four. I believe in the importance of it being done now, so I'm going to vote in opposition to it, so it fails, and we're back to the main motion. We're going to vote on the main motion. All those in favor of the main motion, please indicate.
Any more discussion on the main motion first?
Yeah, if we could do a little more discussion.
All right. Discussion? Pat?
The wording of the motion states that its MX in West Eugene doesn't specify any route. So based on that, this motion really could involve Highway 99 at this point, of the passing of this motion, so.
Couldn't let that go, couldn't you?
One last shot at Highway 99.
I'm with you, brother. Yeah.
Other discussion?
Pat, ship sail.
Mike?
Yeah, I think we're all aware that we got, we received a communication from an attorney here yesterday, I think it was, with regard to Section 41 of the Charter, and my question is, what I saw from city attorney was that this is, this is not something we need to put to a public vote. My reading, I'm certainly no lawyer, as I said before, but my reading of Section 41 suggests that perhaps this does require us to put to a public vote. And I'm wondering, oh, look, more ants right here. Oops, sorry. I'm wondering if you can help me understand a little bit more in-depth your reasoning on telling us that you don't think that this violates our obligations in Section 41 specifically? Why is this not a throughway?
Section 41 of the Charter provides that the council may not construct, or may not enter into an agreement to construct a freeway or a throughway. The council's vote today does not authorize construction, it doesn't authorize entering into any agreement. Section 41 just doesn't apply. This is an LTD project. Even if what LTD is proposing to do was a throughway, Section 41 doesn't limit what LTD does. Section 41 only limits what the city council does. What this does, in my opinion, is not to construct a throughway. West 11th is already there. There may be some additional limited access on West 11th. The city council has adopted, or at least reviewed, access management guidelines sometime in the past six months. The city limits access all the time. This does not create a throughway, in my opinion, given the state statute definition of throughway. Beyond that, I can't explain anymore. I mean, I could do it in a memo to you, but not off the top of my head today. But I have no doubt that Section 41 does not apply to the council's action, and that if somebody wants to challenge the council's action, saying you violated Section 41, the city wins that case.
Doesn't the wording around that particular section, though, say that we may not, or we may not engage with another entity to do so?
You may not enter into an agreement with another entity. So if the, give you an example, the state of Oregon, hypothetically, let's say, wants to extend Beltline, I think is originally proposed, it just keeps going out West Eugene, and the state of Oregon wants the city to undertake that project for it, Section 41 would preclude the council from authorizing entering into an agreement with the state of Oregon to build that freeway for the state of Oregon. Section 41 would not preclude the state of Oregon from building the freeway, but the city could not enter into an agreement to assist with that.
So will we be entering into agreement subsequent to any of this, to assist with what LTD does?
I don't know. But this motion would not authorize that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, without further discussion, then, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate. One, two, three, four, in opposition. One, two, three, four. I am certainly supportive of it, so I vote yes, and it passes. We're on to the next motion, and that is, pick your choice.
I move to select the 6th, 7th, 11th route as the city's preferred route for West Eugene and MX.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
That's what it says here.
Six and seven, yes, George pulling.
After, as a member of the EMX Steering Committee, my original vote was the West 11th, 13th route. After some additional information came in, and talking with some additional folks, I feel that the 6th, 7th, 11th route is probably the better preferred of the routes. However, since at this point, I've been, I am opposed to the whole process, because of the no-build option being defeated, I'm going to vote no against any further motions on this, although I do feel that the 6th, 7th is probably the better route now.
Alan? Alan?
I'm supportive of the 13th, 11th route for a couple of reasons. We've often talked about that it's not which of these routes we do, but what the order that we do them in. And I've become convinced that the order actually is important here, and that we should be good financial stewards of where we are in terms of finances in this project. The 13th, 11th route is $10 million cheaper, so that's $10 million taxpayer money we want to spend. It also, the 6th, 7th route is $700,000 a year more to operate that route. And I also, and that's predominantly because in order to serve the River Road and Highway 99, we have to keep those redundant routes at the same time we do a West 11th if we pick the 6th, 7th route. So that adds to the cost of it. That cost does not get incurred if we flip the order of them. If we do West 11th, 13th, 11th first, then that cost doesn't get incurred. Once the route goes out to the Bethel area, that we won't have that operations cost increase. And I also think that the, if we do the 6th, 7th one first, it ends up being, putting in jeopardy whether or not we ever get to the 11th, 13th route. And probably, and that makes it much, much more difficult to do later. So I think, and finally, when we asked all of the groups, or the LTD asked all of the different groups to... different groups to weigh in on this issue, all of them suggested West 11th, some of them suggested both. So I'll reserve another round. I might propose that we move both forward if it looks like this is going to pass.
Mike, you're next.
Well, I'd like to encourage my colleague to consider this. I made my point very clear about how I feel about proceeding at this time. I think it's unwise for us to do that. But the decision of the majority of the council is the will of the body, and I accept that. Having accepted that, I don't think it's fair to my constituents, for me personally, to not voice what I think is the wiser choice, now knowing that the body has spoken. So I encourage you to participate in that, if you think of a way that that makes sense for you. I personally have become convinced with information that I've seen, that it's wiser for us to consider the 6th, 7th, 11th route. And there are a number of reasons for that that have been articulated over these last couple of months by people much more erudite than myself. So I'm not going to restate the list, but Mr. Conti does a fine job of it, for one, and did so this morning on the radio. So I think that based on all the input that I've seen, that becomes the wiser alignment, knowing that the majority of this body has already acted.
Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. So I was going to move to substitute C, because I think that, even though I agree with everything Alan has said about 13th and 11th, I am not, I originally wanted 6th and 7th because of the fact that, you know, I would like for it to go out to Highway 99, not necessarily Bethel, but that they can end up there. I understand the cost versus, the cost versus, you know, the rationale about it not, you know, if we don't do 11th now and 13th, chances are there won't be money for it, or it won't get built, or this conversation will happen all over again. But I'm not, I'm not that married to either one of them. I still think, I would like to see us move, so I'd like to substitute C.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, C has been moved and seconded. I'm going to ask, Chris, did you want to speak to C?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that, and I'll combine what I was going to talk about. I have been persuaded over time that I actually like the 6th and 7th route. In fact, I, at the J-PAC meeting, was the one who kind of kept that option alive and forwarded it to the rest of the body, because I think it helps the conversation if you have options to look at. And I like 6th and 7th because it not only reflects residential ridership, especially in the Whittaker area, which is something that Pauline mentioned once before, is I think the Whittaker area is something we need to take into consideration. But it also has potential for commercial ridership and retail ridership as well. So it may have some options in its favor over 13th, even though 13th is cheaper, 13th may be faster, but 6th, 7th may actually accommodate better what it is we're trying to get to. With that said, realizing that from what I'm hearing is there is still some perhaps opportunity for continued conversation, and I have talked with LTD, what's going to be the impact if we didn't have a single route to go forward with? It requires them to negotiate more in the process, but it doesn't really create a major barrier. It keeps uncertainty alive a lot longer, which I wouldn't like to have to do. But I think in order to have the kind of conversation that I would like to have around MX, particularly in light of the land use conversations, I'm perfectly fine with moving with C, even though I know it's not going to be the favorite option, I think it is the most reasonable option at this point.
Okay, Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to speak to the initial motion, but I'll wrap it into discussion of the amendment. I'm going to vote against the amendment for a couple of reasons. One, the reason that I do support 6th and 7th, it does make it less expensive to go out to Bethel ultimately. And if you combine the two projects, the ultimate expense is lower than going 13th and then going 6th and 7th. The reason that I'm going to speak against the motion is, this is a pretty contentious item, and the more we narrow it down at this point, the less breadth there is for contention. I believe the discussion's already been had regarding 6th and 7th and 13th. I believe we've received enough testimony, enough input on the two routes, and at this point in time, narrowing it down to the support of a single route would make it a lot easier to focus on the issues with that route, rather than dilute our focus to two different routes, and try to focus on two different sets of issues, so.
George Brown?
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I'm ready to make a decision. I will not support the amendment. I think it's time to pick one. I don't know, I, since we're not going to spend more time in general, just discussing the whole project, I think, I don't know, I just feel like we've, I think we're ready to make a decision. It's the will of the body to, of the majority, to move it on, so I won't support the amendment, but I will support moving 6th and 7th forward to the environmental review.
Betty?
I won't support this amendment either. I think LTD has done enough analysis. It doesn't mean I agree with everything they've done, but I don't think there's any point in their doing more analysis. I'd like to go backwards and go back to 99, which I voted for originally, but that's been disposed of for now. Thank you.
I'll second that. I'll third.
Surprise, surprise. Andrea?
So I'm hearing what my peers are saying at the table, so if with the second, I would like to substitute B.
Well, you just.
Withdraw.
Okay, I'll withdraw.
Already on the table.
But you know.
B is the one.
B is on the table.
B is the one.
And are you willing to do that?
There you go.
Yep, withdrawn. Okay, we're back to then the motion on 6th and 7th. Did we put it on the table already?
Already did.
Yep. All right, so the rate of, yes.
After listening to my fellow councillor, councillor's comments.
Which one?
I know that. I know, oh, sorry, I'm going to let those off, I'm sorry. I know that my vote either way at this point won't matter, because I can see that the motion is going to pass. But I just want to send a message out to particularly the people that live along West 11th and West 13th, that I am very supportive of the 6th, 7th, 11th route. So I'm still not really sold on the whole West Eugene route as proposed, but I will support the 6th, 7th, 11th route.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
Clarification, Mayor.
Yep.
The motion that's on the table, could we have that read?
B.
B is the motion that's on the table, amendment is.
I move to select 6th, 7th, 11th route as the city council's preferred route for West Eugene MX. This is what's on the table. All right, ready to vote? All in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. All in favor, none in opposition, it passes. And with that, we cross the Rubicon.
In more ways than one.
I think we crossed that.
No going back.
To the west side.